Notice of this regular meeting was given to the public by forwarding the complete agenda to all requesting radio stations and newspapers. Copies of the complete agenda are available for inspection at all public schools and at the superintendent's office. Anyone desiring information as to forthcoming meetings should contact the superintendent's office. Please stand for the pledge. Roll call, please.
Ms. Adams? Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mrs. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Tierney?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yep.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Mott.
Here. Next, we have awards and recognitions, where there are none. Introduction and welcome for student ambassador, who is not here because we haven't, we haven't actually had students in yet. And next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. One week from today, all KUSD students will return to school. At Frank, students at Frank Elementary returned earlier this month. Although this summer wasn't as hectic as last summer, quite a bit was done to make sure that our students are returning to schools and staff are ready and welcoming for a new school year. Hillcrest has moved into the new, former Wilson Building, and all the staff returned yesterday to get ready for the start of the year. Convocation this year was recorded and shown to all staff yesterday. After last year's in-person convocation in Indian Trail, the staff were surveyed regarding whether they preferred in-person or virtual, and the majority of the respondents indicated they preferred virtual. Thank you to the Communications Department, KaiPAC performers, students from Brass, Forest Park, Indian Trail, and Tremper who helped with this production. Also, thank, thank you to Ms. Mottard for recording a welcome back message for staff. And I would also like to acknowledge the great work that the Communications Department did to make this production. This year, the focus of convocation was the difference teachers make in the lives of their students. Our students did an amazing job mixing humor with poignant stories to express to our staff the importance of their work. The KaiPAC performers who were featured in the video were absolutely incredible. It really is a true treat to see the talent of our students on full display. All in all, we're ready for a great start to the new school year and eagerly anticipating having students back in school one week from today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Legislative Report.
Just brief, talked with SWISA, and they informed us, Superintendent as well, that there are still pending some annuitant bills, three, I understand, and so we'll be working to get one of those past the finish line. That's all.
Next, we have the views and comments by the public. Welcome to all who have signed up to speak tonight. The Board values your input and interest in KUSD. We'd like to remind you that Board meetings are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. Any written comments received prior to the meeting have been shared with the full Board. To ensure Board meetings are conducted in an orderly and productive manner, all public comments are subject to the regulations outlined on the sign-up sheet. Each speaker has three minutes, and our Acting Secretary right now, Stacy, will be keeping the time. Our first speaker is Valerie Kretschmer, virtually.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Kretschmer. I am here tonight because our community deserves accountability, transparency, and above all, commitment to our children's education. Let me start with our students with disabilities. Federal law requires that every child receive a free and appropriate education. Yet I have firsthand knowledge of falsified restraint reports presented to the Board, lack of proper training for staff, and after-school activities where students are still excluded. I personally worked to change after-school program guidelines when my daughter was discriminated against on the Indian Trail dance team. But to this day, coaches in dance and cheer have still not received the training they need to work with kids with disabilities. That is unacceptable. Next, we must take a serious look at how this district manages compensation. Raises for administrators should be based on performance, not handed out automatically. Assistant superintendents can retire at fifty-five, sell back sixty sick days, and receive full family health insurance. Meanwhile, teachers and support staff, those directly serving our children, must work until sixty-two for similar benefits. If we believe in equity, that gap should not exist. And let's talk about salary schedules. Our superintendent makes over two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, with an additional eighty-eight thousand in benefits after a two percent raise in January. He still wants a raise despite his own statement that admin raises should follow teachers, teacher raises. We even see principals being paid above the salary schedule, like a certain administrator who was eliminated at the district office due to DEI cuts and is now an elementary principal, where the pay exceeds the maximum pay scheduled by thousands of dollars. There are many examples where administrative pay far exceeds the pay schedules, and they still want more raises. How can we justify bending rules for administration while our classrooms lack resources and our teachers struggle with shortages? The truth is, every dollar spent above and beyond the salary schedule is a dollar that could go back into the classroom, hiring more teachers, aides, and support staff to actually improve learning. I want to thank Carl, Bob, Sabrina, and Catherine Montemaro for bringing this issue to light. So I'll end with this. For the first time in a long time, both sides of this community seem to agree. We cannot continue approving raises for administration while our children are left behind. Our priority must be education, not bureaucracy. And to the public, I urge you, get out and vote. Stop electing long-term, longtime Board members who rubber stamp administration's agenda without a plan. Our kids deserve better, and it's up to us to make sure they get it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, we have Angela Kretschmer.
Good evening. My name is Angela Kretschmer, and I am the Chapter Chair for Moms for Liberty Kenosha. Until recently, I had students in this district, but due to the ongoing neglect, mismanagement, and lack of transparency from the administration, I made the difficult decision to remove my son from KUSD. This is not something any parent wants to do, but I felt I had no choice. I want to personally thank Carl for bringing the motion last week, or last month, which raised the issue about administrative, administrative raises to light. It's refreshing to see Board members who are willing to stand up and say enough to the bloated leadership in this district. Leadership that, in my opinion, has continuously put itself first while putting teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community last. This administration continues to demand top pay while delivering bottom-tier results. Our students' outcomes reflect this failure. The average elementary math proficiency in the district is twenty-nine percent, and the reading proficiency is thirty-one, while both are below statewide averages. These numbers show that less than one-third of our students are meeting grade-level expectations in the most fundamental subjects. Teachers are under-supported, substitutes are underpaid, staff turnover continues. Meanwhile, leadership wants a raise. That's not only unacceptable, it's insulting. At Summers Elementary, parents and staffs have repeatedly expressed concerns that the current principal is not committing, connecting with the student community. The administration has not addressed those concerns. We do not have a school culture problem, we have a leadership problem. Moms for Liberty is a nonpartisan organization. We stand for the rights of parents to be involved in their children's education. Parents are not the enemy. We are the backbone of our schools, and we are the taxpayers funding the district. The administration al- already gets benefits from agreements that pay them well above many neighboring districts, and yet it's the schoolteachers that ones directly educating our children who continue to go without what they need to succeed. This Board was elected by the people, and your responsibility is to represent us, not to rubber stamp every request from the administration. The trust between the district and the community has been broken, and restoring it requires leadership willing to make hard decisions and put students first. Some of you on this Board today because student, because voters stayed at home or, and kept re-electing the same names, but expecting a different result. That cycle must end. If we want real change, we need to vote differently. We need leadership that puts students first. We need a school board that listens. We need an administration that stops wasting resources and starts earning the trust and the paychecks that come from the public. Kenosha deserves better. Our kids deserve better, and the parents are watching.
Next, we have Kyle Miskovic.
As Kyle Miskovic concerns citizen, and I have a lot to say, but three minutes is not a lot of time, so let me get right to the point. Shame on this administration. How dare they put their paychecks above all else in this district, again? They already make way too much money as it is. Somebody at the previous meeting mentioned how our administration makes twelve to fourteen percent more than their equivalents in Racine. I've been able to find the exact numbers, and they are, they are insane. We have elementary principals making almost a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars a year, high school principals making over a hundred-and-fifty, higher-ups in this building making almost a hundred-and-eighty. And that's not even counting the superintendent. His salary tops two-thirty, and it's still climbing. On top of that insanity, their benefits packages are equivalent to those of business executives, far above and beyond anything any other staff can possibly hope to achieve, and far more than their equivalents in many other districts in Wisconsin, including those in Racine. In other districts, administrators receive very similar benefits to the teaching staff, but here in Kenosha, the difference is night and day. Teachers can accrue up to ninety-six days, but their family insurance doesn't kick in until they turn sixty-two, even if they decide to retire earlier. And if they go back to school, they get reimbursed only fifty for credit, up to twelve credits, or six hundred dollars. Meanwhile, ASTs can accrue up to a hundred-and-twenty-six days. They got, they get family insurance on retirement immediately at fifty-five, and they get reimbursed one hundred percent of all credits earned, up to twenty-four credits, or about seventeen thousand dollars all told. And to top all this off, they receive all major holidays and breaks paid, plus up to five weeks paid vacation time. Teachers get more time off overall because they have the summer off, but none of that time is paid, nor are holiday breaks, and they have to work much, much longer and harder to accrue sick days. The motion was made last month to table the AST pay, pay increase, and after that, this administration retaliated. The Board members who voted in favor of the motion were called into the superintendent's office one by one and berated for their actions. That is bullying, straight up. I was a victim of bullying middle school, and I know bullying when I see it. If it's unacceptable in our schools, it should be unacceptable here at the ESC. But not only is it allowed, it's actively encouraged. This administration has been bullying this Board and the community to get what they want for far too long, and it's time we put a stop to it. I've heard a Board member say in the past how their power is limited, that the admins make all the decisions and the Board just votes on them, but that's not true. You have the power to stop this. You have the power to stand up to these bullies and tell them enough is enough. You have the power to rein them in, and it starts right here tonight. Don't let them slap you around like puppets. Vote their pay increase down. Thank you.
Next, we have Sam Ruchnick.
Good evening, Board members. Admin, Dr. Weiss, Sam Ruchnick, six-two-two-two, Tenth Street. Scott and I are here tonight to speak regarding the AST agreement, CPI for AST, and prep time. We will not deny how much time is sacrificed, how hard our administration works, and that their job, like ours, can be strenuous. The problem, though, is the fact that the AST have for years maintained an agreement or policy that gives them superior benefits to all other employees. This is also not something that other districts do. Some reminders first. In June twenty-twenty-four, it was brought to the Board's attention that only teachers who broke their contract before the school year had to forfeit money, but not the AST group. That was only found as a result of handbooks being placed where all employees could find them, whereas the AST agreement was not. It was hidden, seemingly perhaps intentionally. At the June twenty-twenty-five meeting where the new AST agreement was brought forward, the superintendent stated that the AST agreement was never brought before the Personnel Committee, but the employee handbook was. Why was one brought before the public and the other one, the one that benefits the leaders at the top, was not? As explained to us by the Personnel Committee Chair, a committee is limited to topics unless brought forward by the Board President, designated administrators, and/or the committee chair. Now, when you're new, you don't know what you do not know. I can safely presume that someone new to all this wouldn't realize that this district has a special AST agreement, such as the Personnel Committee Chair. In the military, as rightly pointed out by one of the Board members, leaders eat last. That means that if your subordinates are starving, you don't find a way behind closed doors to provide extra for yourself and the other leaders. Instead, you starve with them. And when the manna finally falls from the sky, you let the subordinates eat first. How can you all ask for raises when you don't give public schoolteachers enough prep time and also increase their class sizes? Reminder that the administration, through Board approval, raised teacher class sizes again, but not prep time. Did any administrators reach out to the Board saying that would be bad for students or I didn't think so. When certain positions that help our administration were being discussed for cuts, the chief of school leadership said that this is the last thing that principals would want. Well, apparently, positions that support admin jobs are valuable and preserved because it helps them, but forcing teachers and students into larger class sizes isn't as important. Some of the benefits that are unique to this AST agreement are that administration are paid out for accumulated sick days and vacation days, unlike teachers.
Thank you, Sam. Next is Scott Coy.
You guys already know who I am. So, I'm gonna start from where he was. So, some of the benefits that are unique to this AST agreement are that administration are paid out for accumulated sick days and vacation days. Mr. Yakely, who is two years from retirement and will give in thirty-one years of his life to Kenosha Unified, has seventy-five sick days currently banked, but will not be given a single dollar. In fact, as a result of not using his days, the district will save money if he does not use them in the form of subs, which would be roughly, hmm, about eight thousand. Now, if he got his daily rate by the number of sick days banked, he'd be paid out roughly thirty-eight thousand. Given the agreement, says AST get a hundred-and-twenty days to accumulate and they make more, it's safe to assume that some of them are taking home forty to fifty thousand after ten years or at retirement. I know several who retired last year like my own principal. Must be nice. Another benefit is that AST have many of their graduate classes fully reimbursed, which can be tens of thousands of dollars. My wife, meanwhile, will have eighteen hundred for her entire master's upon completion of thirty-six credits at fifty dollars a credit from the University of Houston. So why does one group get reimbursed fairly while the rest gets substantially less? My wife, also, again, a Spanish teacher, pointed out that setup also, or this setup also contributes to a gender pay gap where administrators who are disproportionately men get paid out for their sick days, especially given that they have the privilege of not having to use said days for maternity leave, which is unpaid. Meanwhile, this arrangement obviously does not benefit teachers who are majority women, nor the child, childbearing female administrators. Therefore, this agreement clearly contributes to gender inequality. Again, I don't have a problem with AST getting the full CPI, absolutely not. I have never done that in Racine. Conveniently, their CPI is on the agenda, along with the prep time we have been begging for. I have pleaded, I have yelled, I have cried for ten years for this. We have dealt with being in the district that gives the least prep time of any urban area by half. We have watched many of our colleagues leave to go to other districts, or young staff burn out quickly. Our teaching conditions are student-learning conditions, but again, I am willing to bet some of you have never, ever been emailed by an administrator advocating for my prep time. If you give AST CPI, do not put an end to the AST agreement, you just let every teacher and EA know they deserve less. I would never allow this in Racine. I'll frame this in a way to try and be a little bit more reasonable, as I get a little bit frustrated, around a person I have done numerous times. The real issue in life is not how many blessings we have, but what we do with our blessings. Some people have many blessings and hoard them. Some have few and give everything away. Fred Rogers. End the AST agreement, make it fair, and please give us our prep time.
Next, we have Megan Gunlock.
Good evening. My name is Megan Gunlock. I don't have any children in KUSD, but I've participated in things. In fact, a few years ago, there was a DPI meeting, roundtable, with several of you in it, in this very room. During that conversation, funds came up, and it was closing schools, and I asked a simple question to the three of you that were at the table with me and said, has anyone in this building offered to take a pay cut? You all agreed with me, but now I'm getting the feeling that it's lip service that was paid that day because you all just approved the renewal of the highest-paid person. Their contract was renewed. Our schools are failing, but the Board and the administration, you're failing the boots-on-the-ground teachers. It's ridiculous. I have a friend who's a teacher. It has taken her twenty years to reach the salary she was making twenty years ago in the private sector. Something's wrong. We're all paying a lot of money, and nobody's doing a damn thing. And I'm grateful that my kids are older. I'm also grateful that I have the means to send my granddaughter to private school in the state she lives. But this isn't okay. Kids are getting short-changed, and so are the teachers. The people that occupy this building, I don't see one beat-up crappy car in the parking lot. I don't, it's ridiculous. The injustice in that is ridiculous, and you should not be able to sleep at night.
Next, we have Karen Kempinon.
Karen Kempinon, Kenosha. Back at the March twenty-fifth regular school board meeting after the failed referendum, the only failed referendum of the large urban cities and, in districts in, in our state, you might recall that my remarks were titled "Transparency, Trust, and Teaching." I was curious back then about whether Dr. Weiss's January twenty-eighth contract extension awarded even before the referendum vote included a pay raise. On the meeting agenda, there was no salary amount, and in the video of the meeting, no salary was mentioned either. When Googling KUSD teacher salary raise, many articles popped up, but what, when Googling KUSD superintendent salary raise, I got, the current KUSD superintendent is Dr. Jeffrey Weiss, and while information on his specific salary and any recent raises is not readily available, the previous superintendent earned a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars annually. So I requested and received the information from KUSD about Dr. Weiss's contract extension and searched gov salaries dot com, dot com, and the results of a FOIA request from the Kenosha County I to determine the percentage raise that Dr. Weiss had been given. So in conclusion, I politely said back then, to rebuild trust with the community, I urge you to make this information more transparent as you move forward. Those were simpler times, weren't they? When we thought that the lack of transparency might have been a simple clerical error in not providing essential information to the taxpaying public. Now we have learned that Kenosha, unlike Racine, Milwaukee, Madison, Green Bay, and South Milwaukee, Dr. Weiss's previous district has a separate, hidden AST handbook, rich with benefits for active employees and retirees that the rest of KUSD staff do not receive. Some have been mentioned already, but in addition, in the case of Dr. Weiss's participation in a tax-sheltered annuity, up to fifteen thousand dollars a year. There is a saying, "Trust takes years to build, seconds to break, and forever to repair." It is not the educators, students, or community members who have broken trust. Those who have need to begin the work of repairing it or forever live with their legacy.
Next, we have Scott Farnsworth.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, you have had to make a number of very difficult financial decisions over the past two years, and unfortunately, it doesn't appear that that problem will be going away anytime soon. I have also addressed you many times, pointing out that your ethics policy states that you always think in terms of children first, which for some of you has an admittedly different interpretation from my own, though I understand your reasoning. Tonight, you will be presented with information upon which to decide how you are going to address the proposed salary increases for the AST group. I have to say that I was a bit surprised by the information presented, one might say, argued, by Mr. Hamdan at last month's meeting. I found it surprising that he emphasized the lowest salaries of the ASTs while pointing to only the very highest level and tier of the teacher's salary schedule, making the point that some fifty percent of the AST salaries were below the very highest for teachers, but failing to point out that the starting salaries for the lowest-paid ASTs is virtually identical to that of a beginning teacher. The very highest teachers. Ah, I lost my place. Mr. Hamdan also took time to point out that some two-hundred-and-ten teachers sit at the very top of the pay scale, roughly one in seven, perhaps. He didn't point out that some two-hundred-and-twenty-five sit on the bottom five steps of the salary schedule. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five teachers who will have no chance of seeing the top of the schedule until twenty-fifty at the earliest. Not to mention that they will only get there by self-funding a significant amount of additional education, no doubt by having to assume even more student debt, loan debt, that they inevitably bring with them into their profession, and all compensated by this district at a significantly lower rate than the AST group. I could go on, but you've already heard a great deal about the additional benefits in the AST agreement compared to those in other employee groups. Meanwhile, the real needs of teachers to provide the best possible education to the children of this district are being proposed to be delayed yet another year. I can only say that elementary prep time has been an issue brought before this Board since the time I started on the negotiations team with the KEA some thirty-five years ago. It's ridiculous. And secondary staff have had to work with half of the prep time they used to have for nearly the past fifteen years. When I used to teach my students about economic concepts, I would always tell them that the definition of true cost of anything, whether it be time or money, has been what would have been done or bought in its place. I encourage you all to think about the financial decisions you make tonight in those terms, and remember your code of ethics. Think of children first.
Next up is Wesley Cutts.
Hello. I'm here today to bring attention to some of the things I'm concerned about. I've talked once before about recess, how good it is for students, how it is considered instructional time, and how it has been shown in studies to increase academic performance. I say this as a point of reference and reminder, that is not my focus today, but I don't want it to be forgotten. Instead, I want to analyze the question, why and how are we getting staff of this quality? And unfortunately, I mean that in a negative light, even though we can all agree that there are certainly some quality staff in KUSD. But one bad apple spoils the bunch. While not exactly true in this context, it still illuminates the fact that people are more likely to focus on the bad and not the good. No matter how great some staff are, the work is undone when you have other staff that are inappropriate or sometimes even incompetent. Why do we have a rotating door of teachers in this district and some pretty bad apples, or hopefully have had those and are gone? Well, why would high-quality staff come and even stay? We offer less prep time than urban districts around us. We offer more class size, so more students in your class, thirty-two right now for high school on average. And on top of that, you could get paid more or the same for the same work or less work on most cases. So until we give more incentive for quality staff, the only quality staff who are staying are gonna be those who are either connected to the community or those who value the mission who have bought in. But even with those people, that's not enough to fill our needs, and so we're left with the bottom of the barrel. Because quality staff will avoid or leave KUSD because they know their worth, and KUSD shows via their inaction on their pay and their prep time that they don't see their value. So I'm still here, others are still here, who have been here way longer than me, but that's not enough. And new staff, why would they bother? I love my community, I love the school I'm at, but this school district has lost the trust of the community, and so a referendum will not pass, as we have seen. And the people on the front lines, those in the classrooms, and the students and families that we serve are the ones who are paying for it. So this is your problem, you need to fix this. Give the teachers the prep time to make higher-quality lessons, or I'll stop Give the teachers the prep time to make higher quality lessons or I'll stop asking for equal quality of districts that offer more. Thank you.
Next we have Maria Barrera.
Good evening, my name is Maria Barrera. I am a current employee of the district. I have worked my way up from being a secretary to being part of a technical team in the AST group, where I have been since 2017. I have started with the district, I only had my high school diploma, along with fifteen years of experience in the service industry and a financial institution. It took dedication and further education from the time I started until I transitioned to my current position, thanks to the support and persistence of educators in the district. I have enjoyed my employment with the district in both of my roles, my first for eighteen years and my current one. I have worked with both positive and negative individuals. It is important to note that each group has members who give their all and others who view their jobs as merely as a paycheck. What surprised me was the board's decision to single out some one group last month. As a member of this group, I have worked hard to be part of it, sacrificing long nights and weekends to obtain my post-secondary education. Those I have had the pleasure of supporting know that I give a hundred percent of myself to help. I am trying to understand the reason behind your actions. I know you need to review everything on the agenda to be well-informed and prepared to take action. However, it was clear that previous communications from a group with a personal issue against administration overshadowed the discussions that evening. I'll be the first to admit that there are individuals within every group who do not work in the best interest of this district or their jobs. Having been here for over twenty-five years, I have witnessed custodians neglecting to clean bathrooms, education assistants doing the bare minimum, secretaries reading books or watching highly-publicized trials during work hours, instructional staff choosing to sub in at school office rather than in that classroom, and administrators being absent. We experience this in our district just as any other employer, whether public or private. However, regardless of my observation or experiences, I find it inexcusable for the board to have acted on this particular agenda item last month without apparent justification. Most of this community elected you, some had my vote while others did not. Your responsibility is to be accountable to everyone, not just a select group. I urge you to investigate and research any claims you hear or any doubts you may have. Do not allow yourselves to be swayed by messages you receive or hear. I'm sorry, you receive. I would also like to point out that when watching these meetings from home, which I do, it's evident that some of you are distracted by your phones, which detracts from engagement and reflects on professionalism. I want to acknowledge the administrators for providing all the information requested by the board for this meeting. Watching the agenda review was very informative, and I hope this board and others in the community felt the same way. Lastly, it's important to note that the majority of these administrators in our district have come up from being teachers themselves. They generally have the instructional and support staff in mind because they have been in their shoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Next we have Hannah Gerbic.
Hi, my name is Hannah Gerbic. I'm a resident of Kenosha and I work for Kenosha Unified. I'm here today with the members of Kenosha Education Association, a group that I'm incredibly proud to be a part of. There are a lot of feelings in this room, and I would say that most of them are negative. People are upset. There are feelings, these feelings are a product of misinformation, distrust, and a lack of accountability. This misinformation has been caused by a lack of transparency. Information about things happening in our district should be openly shared and easy to access unless it violates confidentiality. The fact that our district does not operate in a transparent and clear manner is what has caused this distrust. This is why no one believes what is said by the district and why our referendum failed. After the failed referendum, our district did not take accountability and pushed away any responsibility for this failure. This left everyone dissatisfied. One of these groups most heavily impacted are the ASTs, a hard-working group of people who heard complaints and answered questions and now is upset they haven't received a cost-of-living adjustment. This issue needs to start with separating out the different twelve-month employee groups and reviewing the benefits and compensation between all employee groups and keeping them equitable. My first salary when I signed my contract was at $39,000 as a beginning teacher with over $50,000 in student loans as a first gen, like as the first person in my family to ever go to college. And like I grew up on free and reduced lunch. It's impossible to be able to make, to like live on your own. I had to live with three other people straight out of college because I couldn't afford to live on my own. I'm really calling for our district to change, to stop hiding and show what is really happening in our schools. Because at the same time, there's a lot of garbage, there's a lot of beautiful, amazing things that are happening there. Nothing should be kept behind closed doors. We need to rebuild the trust needed between employees, the district, and the community. When we say things need to happen, then they need to happen. In order to get out of this mess, we need everyone. This is what I feel is what the district has forgotten. This mess is ours, the community, their employees, and the districts. Everyone wants to help, but instead the mess is getting covered up and left to build up because it's easier than admitting difficulties and mistakes. This is our mess, now let's move forward and clean it up together. That is our path. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Robin Cullen.
Hello, my name is Robin Cullen, I live in Kenosha. The opportunity to speak in an open meeting is not a courtesy, it's a right. And it's one of the most important things that sets our public schools apart from voucher schools. In voucher schools, there are no open meetings, no public agendas, and no chance for the community to hold leaders accountable despite taking taxpayers' money. Public education must remain transparent and accountable because our students, families, and staff depend on it. That is why it's troubling that AST benefits were buried in documents that most staff and community members could never reasonably access. Ultimately, it's the school board's responsibility to ensure that administration operates transparency. Other districts in Wisconsin publish one clear handbook for all staff, Kenosha should do the same. And as this board insists on more transparency, there must also include clarity on other issues such as how much the district spends each year on busing and on parent contracts to private schools for students who use vouchers. I want to be clear, I believe all educators and administrators should be paid fairly and well. But the reality is because of inadequate state funding, every other group in our schools has already made sacrifices, whether through decreased benefits, reduced prep time, or fewer classroom resources. It's time for the administration team to also share in those sacrifices instead of protecting generous perks that widen the gap between administrators and everyone else. Public schools thrive when resources are directed towards classrooms and when transparency is the standard and when leadership demonstrates accountability and fairness. If we want the community to support referendums in the future, which we're going to need, then the administration must start by leading by example, and this board must insist on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Andrusiak-Montemiro.
I stand here tonight as a citizen of Kenosha, urging the district to fulfill its promise to provide our children with access to highly-qualified educators in learning environments that are resource-rich, safe, and welcoming. That being said, the people of Kenosha fully understand that budget shortfalls are real. We know money is tight, we know that hard decisions must be made. But what we will not accept, what we cannot accept, is that those decisions consistently seem to fall hardest on the students and educators in the classroom. And meanwhile, administrative salaries climb and the district's rainy day fund continues to bloat. While students sit in overcrowded classrooms, while teachers buy supplies out of their own pockets and spend yet another year pleading for more planning time, while arts programs, librarians, mental health services, and enrichment opportunities are slashed, administrative benefits remain shockingly pricey. I know the talking points you will offer, we need to retain leadership and be competitive to attract top talent. But I ask you this, where is that same urgency when it comes to attracting and retaining teachers? Where is that same competitiveness when special education staff are stretched to breaking? When counselors, deans, and social workers are drowning under impossible caseloads? When we can't attract substitute teachers because our neighbor to the north pays them nearly $2 more per hour? Let me also ask you this, who is this school system for? Because if it's not for our students, then what exactly are we doing here? A budget is a moral document. It shows us what we value, what we prioritize, and who we choose to protect. Every school closure, every cut to a student-facing service while protecting bloated administrative salaries and shielding their lavish benefits from scrutiny is a betrayal of the public trust and the reason the referendum failed. In times of hardship, leaders, leaders worth following, sacrifice first. They take the burden on themselves and they protect those they serve. That's what honor looks like, that's what service looks like. If you want the trust and respect of this community, if you want to call yourselves leaders, then act like it. Put the students first, take the cut yourselves, show us that you have the courage to make the same sacrifices you expect of the rest of us. And until the day you do that, you are not leading, you are simply feeding yourselves first. And the people of Kenosha are watching. Every time you slash a program, cut a librarian, pack another child into an overcrowded classroom, and then turn around to defend full raises for administrators, you're telling us loud and clear that you have forgotten who you serve. Members of the school board, you sit in those seats to make hard choices, so make them. But make them with courage, make them with honor, and make them with the faces of children, not administrators, front and center in your mind. Because if our schools are truly for students, then every dollar, every decision, every sacrifice must prove it. Our teachers deserve that, our students deserve that, and this community-
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
This community will accept nothing less for our children.
Thank you. Next we have Anna Picard.
Hello, my name is Anna Picard and I'm a math interventionist at Bullen and KEA vice president. I'm speaking tonight to recognize and acknowledge the invaluable contributions of our substitute teachers. And I want to encourage the school board to increase the hourly substitute pay by $1 per hour for both daily and long-term assignments. Our substitutes are necessary and valued members of our school communities. They help maintain routines and consistency in learning for students while being expected to jump into a variety of roles, grade levels, subjects, or situations at a minute's notice. Not only should their work be recognized with a wage increase, we need to listen more closely to their concerns. I've spoken to a number of substitutes in the last month who have shared ideas for improving their working conditions and their students' qualities of life and learning while teaching in KUSD. Guidelines for lesson plans, procedural consistency amongst buildings, safety protocols, and prep time are just a few of the topics they've mentioned. Another notable concern is frontline and procedures for daily and long-term placements. For example, a sub may pick up a job for special education and then show up to find they are being reassigned to seventh-grade math. This breeds mistrust and uncertainty for a substitute, lessening the likelihood of them picking up additional jobs. Our substitute teachers have not seen an increase in years, lagging behind our neighboring district in Racine. On the agenda tonight is a proposed 2.95% increase for substitute teachers. This adds up to just a 63 cent increase for daily subs. Even if we were to raise the pay by $1 per hour, we will still be less than the Racine sub rate. It was discussed at the agenda review meeting that funds remain available due to unused benefits for the ten approved district subs, but the amount remaining was not mentioned. I encourage the school board to inquire about the remaining funding in the substitute budget and to see if it is enough to cover more than 2.95% and give a $1 increase, just as once done for our special education ESPs. Lastly, I'd like to encourage the inclusion of substitutes during recognition week. We can't talk the talk but not walk the walk when it comes to appreciating our subs. Adding their names to the years of service graphics and publicly acknowledging their contributions to our students is the right thing to do. Board members, please use your votes tonight to support our subs. Continue asking questions and making decisions that are student-centered and will ensure that KUSD's limited financial resources are allocated in ways that will most directly benefit our students.
And our last speaker is Samantha White.
Good evening, my name is Samantha White. I'm a special education teacher working with the Kenosha Education Association. No matter our role in the Kenosha public schools and community, whether we teach, support, lead, serve, or volunteer, we all want our students to have a public education that equips them with the knowledge, skills, and confidence to succeed in a complex world. The Kenosha Education Association believes that every public education worker, including teachers, education support professionals, ESPs, substitutes, and others, plays a vital role in meeting students' academics, social, and emotional needs. Their contributions must be recognized with a fair and competitive compensation. We recognize the financial challenges our district faces following the failed referendum. These challenges require difficult decisions, but those decisions must center students and prioritize classroom resources, services, and frontline public education workers. We commend the Kenosha Unified School Board for taking the important first step of granting a full cost-of-living adjustment and tier and level advancements to teachers and ESPs. However, additional action is needed to ensure that no public education workers on the frontline are left behind. We propose the following steps. Providing a $1 per hour increase for daily and long-term substitute teachers and ESPs who are essential to maintaining continuity in student learning. Second, rehiring additional librarians and informational technology teachers whose roles are critical to literacy, research skills, and digital learning. Third, guaranteeing protected preparation and planning time for educators at every level, elementary, middle, and high, ensuring that they can plan high-quality instruction and meet student needs effectively. And fourth, reevaluating the administrator, supervisor, and technical AST unit to distinguish technical workers from high-level administrator and leadership positions. By making thoughtful student-centered choices, we can ensure that Kenosha Unified School District's limited financial resources are allocated in ways that most directly benefit our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all who spoke. Please know that with alignment with state statute, board members will not reply to public comments unless they're related to an item properly noticed in tonight's agenda and will do so at the time the item is addressed on the agenda. So next we have administrative and supervisory appointments. There are none. And we go to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Next we have old business.
Yes, there's a presentation for this.
All right.
Your checkler's loading now. There we go. So at the July twenty-second meeting, as has been mentioned, the board tabled the, they approved majority of the CPI wage increases and then tabled the discussion on the AST wage increases for CPI till this meeting on August twenty-sixth. So just to go over what this, what CPI is and what this discussion is about and what the background on CPI is. So CPI is basically the rate of inflation, the cost, the increase of goods and services year to year. The way the state budget works and the way the state rules work is that the teachers are limited to bargaining up to what that cost of living is. And the district practice has been to grant what was given, negotiated with the teachers for every other employee group. So that's some of the background on that. That's, so that's what CPI is. So this gives an illustration of what, of the groups that were approved and those that weren't. So administration recommended a base wage increase of 2.9% for all full-time equivalent staff. In the district, there are 2,282 full-time positions. Out of that, 2,282, 146 fall into the category of administrative, supervisory, or technical, which is about six and a half percent of the total district. The next slide gives a breakdown of the cost of what all of the compensation increases were, are projected to be for the coming year. So you can see there was recommended salary schedule movement for all staff that was approved back in June. So you can see there was recommended salary schedule movement for all staff that was approved back in June for about $2.2 million. The recommended base wage increase for all staff, all FTE staff, full-time equivalent. There's another agenda item on here that Mr. Neer, Mr. Hamden will speak to later on the agenda. But anyway, this was for all FTE staff. That was $4.8 million. Adding back Christmas and New Year's holidays for non-teacher, 10-month FTE staff was about $113,000. And then additional hour-dollar per hour for tier-three ESPs who are special education and preschool ESPs was $234,000, bringing the total recommended to $7.4 million. The, what was tabled was the base wage increase for ASTs. That CPI came roughly to under a half a million dollars, $483,000. So the agenda item, just to reiterate, what's being discussed in this presentation is that CPI adjustment only. The other items, the AST agreement and the, the salary schedule movement are not part of this. This is solely the base wage increase for CPI. This chart gives an idea of what the breakdown of the AST group is. There's, as I said earlier, there's 146 employees. Eighty-six are identified by the district as administrative, 13 are supervisory, and 47 are technical. And then just a, an important note, I'm going to be showing some comparisons, and it's important that I draw this distinction. The district, Kenosha Unified identifies, every district identifies their administrative group a little bit differently. And there's some nuance to that. There's not a right or a wrong way, it's just how the districts do it. So although, and DPI also has a definition. So we identify 86 positions as administrative. DPI identifies 58 of our teaching, of our administrative positions to be administrative. So when I show some comparisons, there's going to be a difference in numbers, and I just want you to know why. There's also, we have coordinators in Kenosha Unified that are identified as administrative. I've been in other districts where they've been identified as teaching positions. We report our chief financial officer as administrative. Other districts classify it under a different category. I'm not saying that anybody's doing it wrong, I'm just saying it creates some differences and some challenges in doing an apples-to-apples comparison. But we, we're going to strive to do our best tonight. So this list here is all of the administrative positions in the district. And you can see it runs from accounting manager at the very, at the very first line through superintendent, through transportation supervisor. So it's a vast variety of administrative positions. This next slide is our supervisory positions. Many of these positions reside in the facilities and reside in the food service departments of the district, and there's 13 total. The technical positions, there are 47 of those. And 23 of those positions, you can see it's the second-to-last line. I know this type is small. But 23 of those positions are our technical support positions, technology support positions that reside solely in the schools. The history on this is there was a time when these were all identified as miscellaneous positions. Probably about 15 years ago, they were folded into the technical group, and then the AST title became, became. That's where that came from, because they were just, they weren't classified in a position. Want to spend a little time on this next slide, talking about the salary range comparison. So for this slide, we had to make some assumptions. And the assumption is, when we take a look at, to get an average hourly rate. So we wanted to take internally, how does this look? And looking at the teacher's salary schedule, we have, it begins at $49,000, goes up to $96,000. And to determine what the hourly rate would be, we took the number of days in the contract, 195, divide, times it by 7.5 hours, which is the numbers in the contracted day, to come up with about $14,062 hours per year. And again, I want to be, this was knowing fully well that there is no teacher in the district who works this little. Teachers put in a lot more time than 14,062 hours a year, no doubt. But we needed to come up with a basis of comparison. Similarly with the AST group, we took an eight-hour day, which is that contract, 260 days, and came up with 2,080 hours. So to take a look at what some of the comparisons would be on an hourly rate, this was just a point for internal comparison. So you can see on this that we have a total of 61 teachers who were at the very first spot on the starting salary schedule last year, making $49,000. Their hourly rate came to be $33.70. We had 210 or so teachers, 209.66, making $96,000. Their hourly rate was $65.76. And compares, so that's the teacher side. Looking over at the AST side, beginning technician has a starting salary of about $50,000. We had two, two of the ASTs, the Ts, most likely at that $50,000. Their hourly rate was $24.33. Looking at the top end of the administrative salary, and mine was pulled out of this, my salary down here is noted, the $233,376. Looking at our strictly administrative, it's a different category. For the top administrators, we had two at the $177, their hourly rate being $85.25. In comparing some of what the top teacher's salary is to some of our other positions based on the hour, you can see that for some of our top elementary principals, $132, their hourly rate is $63. Middle school AP is $62 an hour. Top high school AP is $64 an hour, given the, the number of days and the hours in the day. Top high school principal, top middle school principal is more than that. But just as an internal comparison, I thought this was important information for the board to have. The next slide basically is where we got, so as we took a look to do external comparisons, this next slide is pretty much how we cited, how we're citing our work. So the DPI has categories and identifies what positions in a district are by DPI definition administrative. And we use that for our, for these next couple of comparisons. So we looked at, we looked at the top 10 districts in the state. We looked at a radius around the district from Kenosha. And there are, there's a lot of differences and nuances when you compare MPS Madison to Kenosha. Similarly, if you compare some of our smaller neighboring districts like Westosha or Union Grove, some of that data, it's very difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison. So we looked at, we are currently the fourth-largest district in the state at 18,315 students. We looked at Green Bay, which has 59 students more than us. And we looked at Racine because they're number five and they're right to the north. And inevitably, Racine comes up in conversations about salary and competitiveness. This next slide shows the total number of administrators in each district and the total spend that each district has in the area of administration's salary and benefits. So looking at this, this chart here, you can see that Green Bay, again, they have about 59 students more than us. They have 91.5 administrators and spend $11.5 million overall in administrative salaries. Racine has 80 administrators. They've got about 2,500 students less than us, and they spend $9.3 million, $9.4 million in administrative salaries. Kenosha has 58 administrators and has a $7.6 million spend on administrative salaries. This next slide, just to show a teacher comparison, where things land, is when we take a look at how many teachers they have and the overall amount of money spent on teacher salaries. The Green Bay School District has 1,686 teachers, and they spend $117 million on their teacher salaries. And they average, right, their average salary is $69,400 for a teacher, and that's the mean. Racine has 1,405 teachers. Their district spends $101 million on teacher salaries. The average teacher's salary, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. My mistake. That was for Kenosha. Kenosha has 1,405 teachers. The total spend on teacher salaries in Kenosha is $101 million, about 101.5. The average teacher's salary in Kenosha is $72,170. Racine has 1,371 and a half teachers. Their total spend is $99.5 million. Their average teacher's salary is $72,562. So about $400 greater in the mean. Kenosha is about $3,000, $2,000, $2,500 more than Green Bay in the mean. This chart just basically summarizes that information. The bar graphs on the right is what I'll call your attention to. The green bar graph on the right is Green Bay. Their total spend, the, the outlined box is what they spend on teachers. The green box, the solid green box is on administrators. RUSD is the blue box. Next, you can see RUSD and Kenosha are very, very similar on their total spend for staff. And as I mentioned earlier, we, we do have 2,500 more students than them. So some key findings, based on some of the questions that arose at the July 22 meeting, is that Green Bay has 60%, 60 students, more or less, about 59 more, and they have 33 and a half more administrative positions. RUSD has 2,500 less students, and they have 22 more administrative positions. So that, I think, is some good context for our conversation, for facts. So I'll take any questions.
Is there some, Mrs. Adams?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Are we prepared for that?
We can discuss after we have the motion on the floor. That's the procedure.
I'd like to make a motion
Okay.
That we accept, let me get my paperwork here, just a moment. Okay, that we approve a total base wage increase of 2.95% for all AST employees effective July 1, 2025, with the following conditions. The school board directs administration to develop the 2026-27 handbook to include the work rules and benefits relating to the administrative, supervisory, and technical employee group. That the school board directs administration to bring forward a review of post-employment benefits for all employee groups as a topic of discussion, and that the school board direct administration to present a plan to separate the technical category of employees from the administrative, supervisory, and technical group.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has remained unseconded now. Mrs. Landry, you have questions?
Yeah, I got a question. So you said, we, so it said we had 84 administrators, but only 58 of them count. Did you take that same direction when you looked at the 91 and the 81 administrators on the other sides?
Correct. So we got this information from DPI's website. On DPI's website, when, there was a slide that I had up that I said this is where we cited our work. That site had the number of administrators for each district laid out. The reason why I wanted to bring it up is because on our documents, the things that we've talked about, we've shown 86. So I wanted to explain why that would be, why there would be differences. But when we went through and we just did the straight comparison, as far as what DPI considers to be administrative, that's what we used.
Yes. Mr. Tierney and then Mr. Price.
Can you go back to the top pay for employees? No, the, we're like, the, I had like, I broke it down by like principals and stuff like that, yeah. So the top elementary school principal at $132,372. In June, you guys assigned a principal at $136,417, $4,045 over that.
So I believe this data was taken from '24, '25. I'm looking at Mr. Neer, correct? So this is '24, '25 data. It doesn't reflect '25, '26.
That's correct.
Because it would also have, I'm sorry. So this is '24, '25 data. It would also have increased dollar amounts for other positions. For example, with the, the raise, the 2.95% raise isn't reflected in this as well. So this is just taking that snapshot of '24, '25 data.
Right. So that's going to go up $4,045?
Correct.
Dr. Price?
I was just hoping you could go over the differences between the supervision, supervisory, and the administrative. That was one of the reasons why I think there was interest in having these questions answered over the Sure. the month. And just in particular, I, I guess my frame of reference is at the university that supervisory usually means someone that does evaluations.
Correct.
And is that the operational-
Chris, could you scroll to the supervisory?
Yes.
So these positions on this chart, I would, they do have supervisory duties. And I want to make sure that when I say that, that I'm accurate for everybody. Is that true, Mr. Neer?
Correct. For the most part, the As and Ss have some sort of supervisory control over either one employee or several employees.
Correct. It's not the case for all the Ts.
And I'm understanding that there are some folks that could fall in both of those categories, be administrative and supervisory. These folks are just supervisory, right? But the other admins would have some, they obviously would have evaluation.
Correct. And I believe that there is evaluation, that the staff identified on the supervisory list do have supervision, evaluation duties.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Tierney?
Why, for facilities, there's four crew leaders. Aren't those supervising crew people?
The regional-
Bigger picture. You know, we'd see it in Cub Delight. You know, we, we saw, you know, I don't have to repeat everything that was said during public comments about the differences in employee benefits and things like that. But I think the, the message that we heard, you know, in the context of the referendum, the comments about administrative spending, all those things like that. You know, I think this motion kind of gets us closer to that. I think this motion begins to shed light in the way that, you know, now that we can fold the AST agreement into the employee handbook, it increases transparency. We look at ways for greater equity in administrator pay and benefits. And, you know, the, you know, to Bob's point and to Todd's point, you know, we do have a little bit of structural reform in that, you know, tactical staff with no, with not separating them from the AST group in a way that, you know, obscures those benefit structures and complicates discussions about fairness. We can finally, you know, have an actual meaning, meaningful conversation about that, what that actually means. Especially, you know, when we consider things, you know, about scarce resources and all the conversations about prep time. I think this is a practical step in that direction, so thank you for making a motion.
Right.
And I think this will lead the way to us being able to make the decisions we need to make because we have the correct information finally, so thank you for that. It, it is, I understand what you're saying. It's disturbing when you find out things have been done a certain way. However, we have people that are working to change this so we can move forward in a positive way and clarity for anyone to be able to- so we can move forward in a positive way and clarity for anyone to be able to understand it. So thank you for bringing that forward so we could have this conversation.
Mrs. Adams?
Yes, and I want to thank my fellow board member, Mr. Bryan, for tabling this at the last meeting, I think. You know, we heard from the community, we heard from the teachers' union, and we heard from others. And we just wanted to slow it down a bit and ask a few more questions. The intent wasn't not to give the increase, but to get our questions answered and those of the people that, you know, had contacted us. So I think that giving it that thirty days gave us that opportunity. And I think, you know, board members had a chance to put their heads together on, you know, what is doable, what, you know, what can we, what can we change the next time around? And we'll be working on that. And thank you to all the input we received from all the emails and all the calls. And, you know, it got us to the point that we're at today. And we just want to be fair with all of our employees. As school board members, all groups are employees, and all groups are important. And one, to me, is no more important than the other. I value all employees. And, you know, I just think as an employer, we need to maintain that respect for all of our employees. And I think, I think we're doing the right thing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Tierney?
I just want to be transparent here. So, two weeks ago, at least three or more board members emailed you about, then filed policy eighty-seven-twelve, to add prep time to the agenda. That didn't happen, violated the policy. And then all of a sudden, because we threatened people's pocketbooks that are in leadership, it popped on the agenda on Friday, last Friday. Same with the pay for proposed increase to elementary and high school, or the, dang it.
I'm confused because I'm.
Hourly employees. That wasn't happening until we tabled this.
Yes.
But why does it have to, for a year and a half, I've been trying to get prep time, until we threatened their money? Now it's on. That's frustrating. That's, that's, that's what it feels like to me. That's, and that's why I'm not voting to give.
It is on the agenda. So are we, is there further discussion on the motion? Yes.
First of all, I do share my colleague's frustration on that. I do want to give him some credit because he did bring this up before the referendum. And it's been six years, is way too long. So this is another piece. But I just wanted to codify this just further because my colleague over here did a lot of work on the policies and the committees. So is it in your motion, Ms. Adams, that this is going to go through one of the committees? So it's not that we're waiting on administration to do this work, but that we're going to actively work on this through our committees to inform? And is that?
Right. The motion, the motion does not refer to committees.
Okay.
So that's something we can do.
I would make a friendly amendment.
Okay, so that is not currently on the motion. However, we.
I'm just offering, I mean, you could wordsmith it and we'll read it back, of course. But I'm offering a friendly amendment that this work go through. I believe you had the Personnel and Policy Committee framework.
Could we say involving the committees?
Involving the committees? Is that a friendly?
Will that work? And that we do these three steps involving the committees?
Why do the committees need to be involved?
Yeah, that's, hang on. I'm really not, I'm really not open to that. I am open to committee, but I think that can be done at a later time. I don't think that's what I was trying to accomplish tonight. But by all means, you know, I'm a person that believes everything should go to committee. I just don't want to include that as part of this motion. And I'm confident that that will happen, Mr. Price.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Landry?
Can we put in there that the goal is to have a policy for prep time? Because right now, that's not in there. I would like to see a policy put in.
We're not, we're not on that one. That is the next item B. That is on the agenda, but it's next. Okay? So, voting on the motion? All in favor signify by.
Repeat the motion.
Yeah, that's good. We need a point of order. Can we just repeat the motion exactly?
Yes.
Yeah. The motion is to approve a total base wage increase of two-point-nine-five percent for all AST employees effective July first with the following conditions. Administration develop the twenty-six, twenty-seven handbook to include the work rules and benefits relating to the administrative, supervisory, and technical employee group. Administration bring forward and a review of post-employment benefits for all employee groups as a topic of discussion. And administration present a plan to separate the technical category of employees from the administrative, supervisory, and technical employee group.
Okay. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Absolutely not.
Nope. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Now we are on to the B, proposed increase to elementary and high school professional prep time for the 2026-2027 school year.
Yes. So since, excuse me, since my arrival, I don't have a presentation for this. Since my arrival in Kenosha Unified, I've had conversations about the need for extra, for additional professional preparation time for teachers. In the February referendum, this need was specifically included in the proposal. Although the referendum did not pass, the need has not gone away. So by passing a motion to implement prep time for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, budget construction for that year will include this assumption. Other areas of the budget will experience reductions as a result of this. And right now, it's premature to identify which areas this will be at this time. I also want to make a, I need to make a statement that the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so in order to get prep time into, implement it, the planning for that needs to occur during the winter. So that's why when we went to referendum back in February, that's why I said that in order to get this in, we needed to, for staffing purposes, we needed to do that referendum in February. It involves student schedules, it involves the master schedule, it involves hiring additional staff. So after that window passes, it's almost impossible to implement without tearing up schedules and changing staffing ratios. Therefore, if we begin with a motion now to implement for twenty-six, twenty-seven, the construction around that can include it. I believe we've estimated about that this, for the elementary and for the high school, will cost just over three-million dollars, between three and three-point-five. But again, we need to do the actual staffing to determine that.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Bryan, a motion?
I move to accept administration's recommendation with the amendment directing administration to work with the school board to develop a prep time policy to coincide with the adoption of prep time expansion for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
I'll second.
Second. Can you repeat the last part, please?
Sure. The amendment that the school board directs administration to work with the board to develop a prep time policy to coincide with the adoption of the prep time expansion for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
I'll second.
Okay, we're using the updated professional prep time referendum, page?
Yep.
Okay.
That's.
Thank you. And then with the amendment?
Right.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? And it was seconded?
I seconded twice. Yeah.
Speak to my motion.
It was seconded, thank you. Mr. Bryan, speak to your motion, please?
Yes. Want to thank you, Dr. Weiss, for finally putting this on the agenda. I do share my, share frustration with my colleagues as well that, you know, this took this, it did take quite a long time for us to get here. It is a step forward. It's encouraging to hear from the staff voices and those out in the community who have said for a very long time that, that this isn't just a want, this is essential. And this is exactly what we need to make sure that, you know, teachers are prepared, they have the resources they need, that they could be the best possible professional they could be to serve our students. And I'm glad that we are now in a position that, you know, we're finally taking action. The board hears you, the board is willing to move on this. And I'm hopeful that, you know, with my amendment, that, you know, we'd take that extra additional step to say that prep time is not just, you know, a nice-to-have. We are protecting it, we are guaranteeing it. That it is not just a suggestion for school leadership to abide by, but these are protected professional minutes for our staff. I think, you know, any sort of conversation about expanding prep time, I think, only makes that appropriate. So I'm hopeful that, you know, the rest of the board will support me on that.
Dr. Price?
Again, I want to, I want to thank Bob to my left and Carl to my right over here. I was starting to feel bad about this issue. I came on the board about four years ago, and I did make a commitment that this would be on the front. At the same time, we are dealing with very, very difficult situations. This school district is not failing. It is being failed by a lack of support from the state legislature. We have a responsibility, as everybody on this board has said to every member of this community, taxpayer, union, administration. It is a tough position to be put in when you don't have enough funds to make this happen. I'm a professor. I know what prep time means. It is essential. Everyone needs and deserves to have the right to make their lesson plan. I credit the newest board member for putting the words together that made sense. And I think that this is a win-win for everybody. We should claim our victory and move forward, get this done.
Mrs. Stevens?
Finally, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for getting involved with this because we have been trying, prior, when Carl's on the board, prior to this, we have tried and tried and not been able to get this passed. The funding is a major cause in the issue, but it also, I don't think was valued enough. And especially at the high school level, it's unbelievable, the work that has to get done to make sure these students get the very best in their education. And that means their teachers need the time to prepare, to educate. So, and I think that as far as the money and where we're finding that from, with some of the relief we got with the money that we had, some increases with special education. Would you like to share anything of that at all?
Right now, I'm, as we construct the budget, I'm, I don't, I don't think I can do this as a dollar-for-dollar type of situation. But again, with, as was stated during the public comments, it's a statement of priority. So if this is the board's priority, this is where we'll begin to build the budget. And there will need to be reductions in other areas of it. And I think it's just, I can't say exactly where those are right now because there's a lot of factors that go into this. Our initial projections for prep time have come down because of declining enrollment. So there's a whole bunch of fact, that's just one factor that figures into the overall mix of determining the cost of prep time. And Tark, did I leave anything out?
No, you pretty much nailed it. Just one extra comment I'd piggyback on, I think, to Ms. Stevens' point. We're in a two-year state budget cycle. This year that we're going in, twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, we see a jump on special ed aid, categorical aid increase, that's going from thirty-three percent to about forty-two percent, not really forty-two percent. But year two of the biennium, you don't have that jump. You have a much smaller one. You have from forty-two to forty-five, I believe it is. So twenty-six, twenty-seven is not as good for the district or public schools as twenty-five, twenty-six is going to be from the state budget.
Thank you both for clarifying. I know you'll keep us up to date on those numbers and the challenges that we face.
Thank you. Mrs. Adams?
Yes, I just want to say that I think all the board members have waited for this time that we could have a serious discussion on the prep time. It's something we've wanted to do, but we knew we couldn't with the, with the state of the budget over the last six years. So I'm happy, you know, I'm happy that it's on the agenda. I'm happy that we're moving on this. And the time has come, and we'll do what we can based with what we have. And I just, you know, I just want to say to my fellow board member, Mr. Tierney, we've all, we've all tried, we've all wanted this on here, we've all been asked numerous times. It just was, in my opinion, wasn't doable up until this year. So, you know, thank goodness, we're finally here and we'll find the money.
Mr. Tierney?
All right, so I don't think, policy eighty-seven-twelve, school board meeting agenda preparation and dissemination. I'm just going to read it. The agenda shall be prepared by the superintendent of schools under the direction of the board president, except as otherwise specifically provided by board policy or rule. The board president shall require a written request from three or more of seven board members prior to granting agenda requests by individual board members. No more than two of these, no more than two agenda items per meeting may be placed on the agenda using this process. August thirteenth, I emailed you and Dr. Weiss a policy update to policy forty-three, or four-three-five-one-point-one, guidelines for teacher load. So did Sabrina, so did Carl. Why isn't this policy change on the agenda right now? And why are we getting a text message on August twenty-second saying, oh, we're going to put prep on here?
Point of order, that we're on a, we're on a agenda item that's not about the.
We're on a. Prep time, right?
We're on the motion about.
We're on the motion, and so we speak to the motion, not to something that's happened.
Okay.
So we violate policy and then we get prep time when the referendum fails? That makes sense.
We have the prep time motion on the agenda, but Dr. Weiss, I think you can possibly answer that question?
I hope to. So, in order to implement some of the things that were in the policy, it's impossible to do it without additional time for prep time. And I think that's probably the most succinct way that I can say it. Without, without going to five-of-seven at the high school level, some of the ideas that were in that policy just were not doable. So I see this as an important step in order to move forward on some of those policy items. I was in the process of seeking legal opinions on that policy because I did have some concerns with it. And I didn't think it would, made sense to bring it forward as a half, half-baked, half-done, fully. The fact that, that if the board decides to pass prep time as for twenty-six, twenty-seven, then that opens up some options that were in that policy before. It just, the information that I was getting back was very, very problematic. So nothing nefarious.
Okay, and as I recall, you did say that during the meeting. Okay. All right, now we're on to the motion. Dr. Price?
I just wanted to say again, honestly, I'd like to thank KEA for pointing this out that it's, this really needs to be codified. I know that teacher time is very precious, and they can be pulled in all kinds of different directions. So we're trying to do this in the way that supports our teachers because, of course, good teaching conditions are great learning conditions. Or also, I'm certainly sympathetic to our principals and administrators. I think overall, they do a great job. But we have to have some protections of that preparation time because our kids deserve it. You know, it's just, it's obvious that we need to do this. We've been trying to do this since I've been on the board, since Ms. Adams has been twenty years on the board. And we got to do it. We can't kick the ball down the road.
Okay, are we ready? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously. That brings us to, okay. The base wage increase for non.
Yes.
Yes.
Base wage increase for non-full-time equivalent hourly wage employees. And I believe Mr. Hamden and Mr. Neer have this one.
Good evening. So, the Board of Education approves the cost of living increase for all the collective bargaining groups and employees. And there's a correction to the document there. It should have been on the July twenty-second board meeting, not the June twenty-second board meeting. My apologies. But during that approval process, there were questions asked about the non-full-time equivalent staff hourly charge and if that was going to be applied to them and whether administration could look into including that increase for those job categories and what that might cost. Administration went back and looked at that and are bringing forth the recommendation now that the board approved the adjusted non-full-time equivalent or FTE for the hourly wage for employees effective August twenty-fourth. hourly wage for employees effective August twenty-fourth, twenty-five. On that chart, if you remember, Mr. Hamden presented the different levels of non-FTE salary categories, anything ranging from student helper all the way down to computer programmer. Again, these are kind of pay-as-you-go jobs, so it's not, they're not under contract, they're not, you know, engaged in any long employment, or could be, but it's game workers, it's student helpers, it's referees, that type of thing, employed by the district. These employee categories would be benefiting in a cre, in increase if you were to approve that. What would not be included in this group of people would be summer school teachers, because those are already discussed when summer school pay comes up, and so the board had already approved that, and then there's a special category down at the bottom that they call executive fixed rates, so these are for professional trainers, substitute principals, that type of thing, and this increase would not be applied to them.
Substitute principals, but what about substitutes?
Substitutes would, yes, not substitute principals.
Dr. Price?
Just for clarification, I'm gonna have to abstain, given that my wife is a substitute teacher, from any motion.
Okay.
Like to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the board approved the adjusted non-full-time equivalent FTE hourly wage schedule for employees except for substitute teachers, add one dollar increase to their pay for the effective August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Alright, so as I understand, you are saying-
Two-point-nine-five for everybody.
That two-point-nine-five for everybody, except for the substitutes get the dollar.
Yeah.
Alright, and there was second, and thank you, Mr. Landry. Alright, Mr. Brian?
Just a question, so it's a forty cent difference, right? 'Cause like, the CPI was like, up to like sixty cents or something like that?
On the daily sub, so actually, I can display something here. Chris, can you toss me a cord? Yeah. This is our little schedule for substitute costs, so really, what, starting off is here, you have two substitute rates. You have a daily sub, and then the long-term sub. It used to be a lot more complicated, back in the day, we used to have limited, unlimited, which meant, you know, people could, would get a reduced rate if they narrowed down the locations that they would work at, those are gone, now you're either daily or long-term sub. So the two-point-nine-five, you're going from twenty-seven fifty-seven to twenty-eight thirty-eight, twenty-one twenty-seven to twenty-one ninety, there's a change. If that was zero, and you just added a dollar, you, you see the dollar difference, but it would be twenty-eight fifty-seven and twenty-two twenty-seven. Now, can you afford that, is the question, without adding to the budget? So going back, and there was some reference to something that I'd said in the agenda review, the school board added to the substitute budget last year, when we had expiring ESSER funds. If you recall, we had something called building subs, so they were people that had a long-term job, they had a job every day, they would show up to the, the school, and they were kind of part of the staff. So that triggers some other benefits, so if you average over thirty hours a week, over a twelve-month period, now you're eligible for health insurance under Affordable Care Act. So those staff members, we have to budget for as if they were basically a full-time teacher. And in order to restore those, that funding, we added a million dollars for ten building subs that used to be funded out of ESSER, on an average about a hundred thousand dollar cost per. HR has not been able to fill all of those building subs, so I see in preliminary results, we're still auditing and closing out the year, but I see that the full sub budget was not used, and I'm gonna put it about eight hundred thousand dollars in total that was not used out of that sub budget. So, two things to consider, absorbing the rate increase, which, as Mr. Brian was pointing out, incrementally, it's not that much different from the two-point-nine-five to the rounded dollar, but you also have to consider that we're trying to fill all of those HR building subs too. The goal is not to stop at what you have, I, I'll refer back to Kevin, I don't know if you have five or six of the ten hired at the moment, but you want to fill all ten of those, and then if they qualify for the benefit, we're on the hook for the benefits too, and benefits are a big, huge cost, so if somebody takes a family package, you're talking about thirty thousand dollars, that's why those dollars add up so much.
So, Mr. Hamden's right, so the, I'm sorry, so there's, there's two categories, there's a long-term subs, which DPI defines as an assignment over ten days, we would classify you as a long-term sub, a daily sub is just that, and then we, Mr. Hamden mentioned building subs, so building subs are in employment for the entire school year, so they're acting like in a full-time FTE, they're just not a full-time FTE, but they get the same rate as a long-term sub. The benefit, though, for an employee, or somebody wanting to be a building sub, is they're offered medical insurance, and they can like single-family, or whatever they choose. In addition to that offering, though, you may have long-term subs that work the required thirty hours, so in addition to the cost that you're booking for family coverage for medical for building subs, if subs work their way on as required by the state, by the federal government for average of thirty hours a week, it's a look back, so you're not gonna realize that cost now, it's an analysis of last January looking forward, so there's a potential. We had a few staff that hit that threshold, not a lot, most of them didn't select benefits. As far as the number of building subs, the district had allocated ten building subs to HR for us to parse out and, and allow buildings to use, we've filled six of the ten right now.
So, speaking to the question of can we afford it, you just don't know at this point.
I don't know, but I would, I would lean towards, I think it would be fine, within the eight hundred thousand dollar amount that was unspent, I think it'd end up being pretty close.
That's what I would need to hear, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, first of all, I wanna say, I'm not against the dollar, or the motion, I mean, I'm gonna vote no on the motion on, because I don't like spur of the moment, let's just do it, we haven't got all the details, we haven't seen a presentation, we haven't been able to ask questions, what's this gonna cost? And I don't think that's how, how you run, how you run the district, just willy-nilly, let's just do it. I need to know what it's gonna cost, I need to know what the long-term effect is, year two, year three, year four. Would love to do it, I just have a lot of questions, and we don't have the time to do, for me to ask those questions tonight, so for that reason, I don't think it's a bad motion, I just think we don't have all the pieces yet. I can't vote for something, and I don't know what it's gonna cost us, so I will be voting against the motion.
Okay. Mr. Tierney?
I just wanna point out, so, we're worried about the insurance cost of a family plan for a substitute teacher, but we, you guys get it at fifty-five till sixty-two. Alright, that doesn't make much sense, and if you come to agenda reviews, that's when we talk about stuff, but you don't come, so.
Okay, now, um, let's move on. Ms. Dr. Price?
Again, I think in these instances, it's probably good to do a voice vote, we could have done that before, but-
Sure, I'm sorry, I-
Because I'm gonna have to abstain-
Yes, okay.
Again, yeah.
Okay, let's do a voice vote. And I'm not quite sure how we do this, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, thank you, Stacy. We haven't done it before.
Ms. Adams?
No.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Mrs. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Tierney?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Mr. Price?
Abstain.
Mrs. Modern?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you for helping with that, Stacy. Alright, next, we're on to our approval of provisions, no, revision of policy and rule five-five-three-four-point-one, anaphylaxis first and second reading.
And Ms. Tyndall and Ms. Guckenberg will present.
Thank you, Mrs. Guckenberg and I are here today to present a slight revision to our anaphylaxis policy fifty-five thirty-four-point-one. We brought this before the board nearly a year ago with some bigger revisions. Since you approved the policy last October, there has been some update in the common medical treatment of anaphylaxis. So, at the time, auto-injector was the most commonly used device to administer epinephrine. Since that time, intranasal delivery has been more available and widely used, so we would like to update our policy and include the word "delivery" device, which would include both of those, those ways to administer epinephrine. The policy also has some slight updates on, or the rule does, on our training guidance, and just some clarifying language on, on the delivery.
Yes, Dr. Price?
It's just the same question I asked, maybe you could just go over a little bit of what that training is for the staff, just, you know, for the good of the public, to know how this works.
So, our school nurses train our staff who would be responsible for delivering the medication. Typically, that is our, because our school nurses in our elementary and medals do not work full-time in each school, they would be training those office staff and relevant staff that would be responsible for the student needing that medication yearly.
Okay, other questions?
I'd like to make a motion-
Okay.
To recommend, to accept the administration's recommendation, recommendation on the revisions of policy fifty, fifty-five thirty-four-point-one.
As a first and second read.
Thank you.
Second.
Alright, motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And aye from back there from Mr. Brian, may note that. Chair vote, any, anyone opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Alright, next, we have approval and provisions governing the transportation of students attending public and private schools for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Yep, and Mr. Marx will be presenting.
Okay, kind of the same thing as every year, the state mandates that the school boards have to have a transportation policy in place, and that's what I've provided you. Again, this policy is basically the same thing as last year, we're not doing anything different, we're, only thing we're servicing is the state mandated transportation.
Questions, Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Alright, Mr. Brian?
Just wanna follow up on the question that my colleague raised at the agenda review a couple weeks ago, the question came up about cost to transport private school students and those on parent contracts. I know you were able to run some numbers, but for the public's knowledge, would you be able to share that?
I didn't bring the exact numbers, again, I could go back into them, but what basically happens is, some of our private schools, it'd be too costly for us to provide yellow bus service, as an example, like Christian Life. The location of the school is on the far west side of our district, we would need about seven buses to service them, because they are allowed to claim the entire district as their boundary. Because of that cost, and I can't pair them up with anything, then what the state statute says is, is if it exceeds one and a half times the cost of what I would spend to transport a public school student, we can provide alternate transportation. One of those alternate transportations is the parent contract. I believe it was roughly almost four hundred thousand dollars for the four private schools that we have to service, and how we come about that number is, basically, the state has a formula, I take what we spent last year, I divide it by how many students that I reported to the state that we transported, and it comes out to a number, it's pretty clear-cut and very simple.
Thank you for that transparency, and just to make sure everybody knows, this isn't because we want to do it, it's because it's a statutory requirement.
Nope, we are legally required to provide to all private schools.
Thank you.
Dr. Price?
Of course, a hard act to follow, I think it's very important for the public to know that we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on private school students. Nothing wrong with private schools, got friends that go to private schools, but again, if we want full transparency, we got a legislator in the classroom right now today. It's important that we know that we're spending this money, not from our choice. I did wanna follow up real quick, there was a certain boundary, five miles, you had mentioned that-
Yes, that's for private schools to claim into our district, as an example, Shoreland Lutheran School, if everyone's familiar with that. So, Shoreland, because they're within five miles of Racine and Mount Pleasant as an example, they can go several miles outside of our district boundary to claim students in like the Racine area, and they do that. In our case, right now, we don't have a private school that's on our border within the five miles that can come into Kenosha Unified and claim our territory. The other statute that the state has is that, again, when they wanna claim that, if it's the same denomination, let's use the Catholic elementary school and the Catholic high school systems as a program, if also they wanted to start another school, because they claim all that area already in our district, they have to file petition with us, and you guys would have to decide on if we're gonna split that area up, or if, for an example, all Saints or Sancho's would be willing to give up their territory. If they say no, then it would be up to the board to decide on how they would divvy that up. But in our case, we don't have a school that's within five miles outside of our boundary that's trying to claim any territory in our area right now.
Okay, other questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Alright.
Even though I don't agree with what we have to do with state law, so, I'm gonna make the motion. Administration recommends the school board approval of the provisions governing the transportation of students attending public and private schools for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes, thank you. Next, we have conveyance of property, Sixty-Eighth Avenue, Indian Trail Outlet, and we have Mr. Satter come up. Thank you.
This item addresses a conveyance of property to Kenosha Unified School District from the city of Kenosha. This parcel of land is located at Sixty-Eighth Street and Fifty-Second Avenue on the corner there, it's just under an eighth of an acre of property, and it's been on the radar of the county to get properties that are delinquent in taxes off of their records, and it cleans it up for both the county treasurer and the land information office. So, what happened is that the county has approved, and so has the city, accepted the conveyance through a quick claim deed from county to city, and now we're here to continue the process of approving that the city will convey the property to the school district for our purposes of having contiguous land from this little parcel of land to our property. Other than that, if you have any questions, I can answer that at this time.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Administration recommends initial school board approval of the proposed land conveyance, as well as placing this item on the agenda of the upcoming annual meeting of electors for review and approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Dr. Price?
I was gonna say, are we gonna use it for anything? Are we gonna put up any good signs, or do something creative?
If you look at the size of the land, it's, it's to the west of the retention pond, so, as that thing fills up over time, it could make the parcel land slightly smaller, but there really isn't a huge opportunity for any development on our end, we do mow the lawn, and we shovel the snow at this point, and we'll continue to do that.
Food trucks?
Yeah, I was gonna say KUSD food truck.
Okay, alright, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Mr. Brian, you had a que, you had some-
Yeah, because our friends at the Boys and Girls Club have been patiently waiting the entire time, I don't know if it would result in a motion, but wondering if we could just move that up, because I know our next option, our next item on the agenda is gonna be a lengthy topic of discussion, so I don't know if we need to make a motion and then the agenda such that, or it's a procedural-
Didn't think we realized. Is our-
Is it a procedural motion?
If, if there's consensus, we can just move it.
Okay.
Okay, is there consensus? Alright, then we'll move it, thank you. All right, then we'll move it. Thank you. So we're going to do F, and then we're going to do E. So, welcome.
Thank you. I have with me today, Tara and Lloyd are here from the Boys and Girls Club to, that will help with any questions if we have them. This is a yearly review of, of the previous year's contract and next year's contract. We do the same conversation every year. There's no suggested changes. We're still talking about contributing sixty thousand dollars of fund eighty money to the gang prevention program at the Boys and Girls Club. The recommendation is that the school board approve entering into this memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club for Gang Prevention Education Program for the, at the cost of sixty thousand dollars from Fund Eighty. There are four attachments that are there. One of them is the year-end report for twenty-four, twenty-five that shows the data of how they did with their goals in the program. Attachment B is data charts that are a part of that same year-end report. Attachment C is the program description and goals for next year, and the MOU for twenty-five, twenty-six is also there as attachment D.
Okay, questions? Stop, Mr. Tierney?
Yeah, I was just curious, is there any opportunity for board members to like help you guys out or get involved in this?
Absolutely.
One of our goals is like get out and do stuff, so this will be something.
There's always opportunity.
Okay, if you could reach out to me or I'll find you and.
Absolutely, we'd love that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Price?
Yeah, I would offer my services too, to what degree you could use them. Can you just go into a little detail about what the family field trips are, what, what are some of these activities that the kids are doing and?
Sure, our family field trips, probably ninety, I would say ninety-five percent of our family field trips are educational field trips. So for instance, we have field trips to Curtis College where we go to their football game, but it's also an opportunity for the kids to talk to someone from financial aid, talk to someone about scheduling and admissions and how they could possibly someday attend there. And the same thing with Parkside. We also have trips to museum, to the museums. And so all of our field trips for the most part are pre-educational.
Mr. Bryan?
Kind of building on that, I'm kind of curious if you could share for the public what, what were some of the outcomes as a result of the activities with the children you work with?
What are some of the, I'm sorry.
Like some of the outcomes, like some of the stories you can share?
Oh, some of the story. Well, I'll just start, I'll start with like, so I'll start by saying, most of the children that we work with tend to have behavioral issues. They struggle academically, attendance. So some of the things that we do, we go in and, and we meet with the counselors and teachers and to help identify those students. And we sort of, and we try to figure out what are some of their needs and what do, what do we need to do to sort of help them get to where they need to be as far as their grades and things of that nature. Here was what we have here listed. We talk, we talk, we list the goals. The goals are eighty-five percent of our youth, we'd like to see them not to have any new offenses in regards to referrals, detention, things of that nature, fights. And for the kids that participate in our program, as you can see, ninety-four percent of those children are pretty successful and improving their behavior and not ending up in those types of situations. In regards to youth who have participated in at least four non-gang activities per month, ninety percent, ninety-six percent of our youth participate in at least four non-gang related activities a month. And that can be in like our Smart Moves program. We don't just offer that in school, but we also offer it at night at the club as well. And so we usually get a pretty good participation rate in that. And we track all these things by attendance and all that good stuff.
Even just like, you know, like you listed eighty-two percent of the kids improved their attendance in school, and then you also talked about the percentage of kids in here. I don't, I can't see it from where I'm sitting, but a great, you met your goal in terms of percentage of kids that improved their GPA in school while they were participating in the program?
Yes.
There it is, it's the bottom one.
So eighty percent of our youth that participate in our program, they do improve, improve their academic performance. The average GPA upon entry is one point eight. And during, during the course of our program, at the conclusion, it does go up to about two point two.
That's very good. Thank you for the additional context.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, Mrs. Adams?
Yes. So I know you get funding from various sources to the tune of about three hundred thousand a year for the gang prevention program. I don't see like a budget for our sixty thousand. What does our sixty thousand contribution, what does that use for? Is it salaries? Of the, of the gang prevention directors? What are we, what are we funding out of the three hundred thousand?
Yes, so we put that total budget together for the whole gang prevention program, so it's KUSD's money is in a combined pot with others, as you see on that sheet, so that we can serve more kids. So it's definitely salary. Salary benefits for not just Lloyd, but the other part-time people that are our staff members that are going into Kenosha's schools. And we're being asked every day to serve more and more kids and to come into more and more schools for our services.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh. Okay.
And then, yes.
Then you can speak.
Sure. Yeah. Administration recommends that the school board approve entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of Kenosha for Gang Prevention Education Program at the cost of sixty thousand from Fund Eighty during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Dr. Price?
I just, you know, wanted to commend you for the great work you're doing. These are very good outcomes. And just, you know, my observation is half the challenge for a lot of our kids these days is just showing up. I mean, the absenteeism is still really disturbing, and whatever you can do or give us some insights, how to keep kids involved and engaged, more power to you. So thank you for your.
Thank you very much for the support. We just had a meeting today that talked about that very thing, that if the club didn't exist here, what would our community look like? Because our crime is down considerably because the kids have places to go, safe places to go after school. So, we're very fortunate, so we thank you for the support.
I'd like to echo the thank you too. Thank you for all the work you do. Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. And now we go to the controlled entrances.
And Mr. Hamden will be sharing this conversation. Just as a note, this is for discussion only. There's no action associated with this item.
Okay, as I was going to take off for a short break, it was brought to my attention that we have several other board members who need to also take a short break. And we want to give Mr. Hamden our full attention, so we'll take five. I don't say that. Okay. All right, we're back in session. And Mr. Hamden?
Oh, great.
We're on the controlled entrances. We flipped ENF there.
Controlled entrances, so thank you again. As Dr. Weiss mentioned, this is just an informational kind of update and can give you a status of the projects. So remember, let's take a little history trip back. Remember when we were talking about a proposed referendum, part of that referendum included the costs that it would take to complete the controlled entrance projects? And we have seven schools in our district that are still lacking the controlled entrance. Controlled entrance is a very specific term. It means a lot more than just having multiple doors that you buzz in. Controlled entrance means having one path for visitors coming into the building so that they don't access hallways, and they really have to funnel through the main office first. So it's a lot more than just having secured doors. A lot of times, these projects involve physically remodeling the building and redesigning the building so that we have, like, some of our cases, the main office located smack dab in the middle of the building, that does not work for controlled entrances. So you're talking about really major remodeling. And remember, we don't have drywall buildings, we have brick and mortar, we have HVAC systems, we have electrical systems, we have tile, we have all above that make these remodeling projects very expensive. Nonetheless, these were the seven schools, and they remain today. So Bose, Curtis Strange, Forest Park, Jeffrey, Harvey, Whittier, and Lance Middle School, so only middle school. So at the time of the referendum, we had an accelerated timeline because we wanted to get all of these projects done altogether in really fast, in a short amount of time. So the estimated cost of the project's total was about twelve and a half million dollars. That would have required borrowing. So you have to add on the true costs, which is the additional interest that it takes to borrow those funds as well. Doing it in a shortened period of time, in a five-year period, the estimation was, with interest rates at the time, that it would be about a fifteen million dollar total cost project. That's principal of twelve and a half million plus the interest that it takes. So the math behind the portion in the referendum question was borrow that money over a five-year period, do the projects all at once, because you'd get all the proceeds at once, and then pay it back over five years, which was the life of the proposed referendum. That's why you remember seeing numbers of three million dollars in the referendum question that would have gone towards this. And then there was about half a million dollars as well for upgraded security hardware and software items. So basically, the camera systems and the AI behind the camera systems. So now, here we are today. The referendum failed, obviously. So what options does the board have to consider to still make progress or still achieve these projects? Security is still a top priority, so we have these options that the board can consider. First one would be proposing another referendum question. And the recommendation would be that not an operating referendum, this would be a standalone, strictly security-focused, security question focused on the project for the seven controlled entrances. There's pros and cons with all of these, and I'll just kind of, as I come to my head, and this will be for the board to discuss and debate, but proposing the referendum question, there's timeline restrictions on that, so the next time that you could even contemplate proposing another referendum question would be, I believe, the fall of twenty-six, or even after April, April twenty-sixth. Thank you, Dr. Weiss. So that's one challenge right off the bat. And then given the state budget and the lack of funding for the equalization aid, I am going to foreshadow a little bit here, we will be seeing a tax levy increase just from the lack of state equalization aid funding that came through. So the state budget increased our per pupil amount, three hundred twenty-five per pupil, that increases tax levy or the revenue limit authority for this, for the district, but it did not give the equalization aid dollars to back that up, so in essence, that will be bared by the taxpayer. So even with a failed referendum, you're going to see tax levy increase potential. Asking for another referendum to increase taxes has its own challenges. Revising the scope of the projects, which would be revising them down and funding them gradually without borrowing money, is an option. That has its own challenges in and of itself. Revising the scope means like, what do you, how do you do it differently? Those projects were vetted, they were, there was a bid that went out to get a request for proposal to get contractors. There was architectural design work, all of that was done. And now to go back and revise it, you can, but what are you going to change there, really? There's probably some limited options. Or it would, could require rethinking it. Is there some way to get, you know, stretch your dollars and increase your security by not spending the, the full dollar amount that was projected for each project, but you have to kind of weigh, what are you going to give up there? And then number three would be to borrow funds without a referendum, which means the state statutes kick in, and you have to do that under the revenue limit cap. And that means that you're paying for your debt service out of your regular operations. Danger with that is you're committing yourself. We're already stressed on our operating budget with the lack of inflationary increases coming out of the state budget. This would be then committing monies out of your regular operating budget. I put in there that you could supplement and use some planned use of reserves, so you could gradually pay some of that back, knowing that you're, you will be in a deficit budget. knowing that you will be in a deficit budget, but that would then come from the planned use of reserves. If you do that, you have to be careful and make sure that you do it controlled so that you're limiting the impact on cash flow and operating funds. This is small print, but I will walk through some of this. This is just giving you a hypothetical example, working with our financial advisors, PMA, what interest rate environment looks like right now and what different borrowing scenarios could be. Remember I said twelve and a half million dollars was the initial project dollar amount? Now that we're looking at a little bit stretched-out timeline, not as accelerated, and we're sharpening the pencil with some of the project costs. We believe we can get it around ten million dollars. That's an estimate. That would have to be worked out with facilities and the contractors. But let's, for hypothetical, say that we can get a ten million dollar project to knock out those seven controlled entrances. If you borrow that money over five years, the way you read this is, and hopefully you can see my cursor up here, you're borrowing ten million dollars issuing a bond, and this is the public market. You'll pay back that bond over five years. This is the principal amount. This is the interest amount. Average interest rate of about four percent on that kind of borrow. So this total amount is what you would need to pay every single year. So we're talking about two point two million dollars coming out of your operations to pay back that loan, which would then ultimately you'd be paying back eleven million dollars. That make sense, everybody? All right, so if you stretch it out, now the interest rate goes up a little bit, because the lenders are going to get their money. That ten million dollar borrowing over a ten-year issuance, you'd be paying back about one point two million dollars a year, so your annual cost is going to go down. But overall, over time, you're adding another one point one million dollars worth of interest that you'll end up paying. So that ten million dollar project now would cost twelve point two million. But in the world of budgeting, when you have fixed budgets, setting aside one point two million dollars out of your operations is more palatable than two point two million dollars. So there's pros and cons to this thing. And if you stretch it out over twenty years, you're talking about four and a half percent interest rate. Now you're talking, you can get your annual cost under a million dollars, but you're ending up with a fifteen million dollar project. I'm gonna pause there on that slide, because I know it's a lot of info, but just think about it like you're buying a car. And, you know, in car sales, they'd say, what do you want your monthly payment to be? Well, it's a little bit of a trick, because you're going to end up paying a lot more for that car when you stretch out your car loan for a couple more years. But in the world of governmental budgeting, there are pros to having a smaller fixed dollar amount that you can support in a different budget. So items for consideration. This doesn't require a vote right now, but you want to think about the equalization aid funding challenges that we alluded to from the state budget. So that three hundred twenty-five dollar increase is not being supported with extra equalization aid. Tax levies will go up because of this, and not just here, this all throughout the state. Some school districts will see benefits in their equalization aid, some not. And it's a very complex equalization aid formula, but I will speak for KUSD. We are slipping in our position in that formula, so it compares us against the other four hundred and twenty-one districts. Our share of that pie is getting smaller and smaller. And it's going to be multiple factors. It's going to be something called shared cost, which is how much we're spending as a district that the state aids in or supports. And then our property value per member. And that's a measure of how rich we are as a school district, or what's our tax tolerance. Our property values are increasing, and our enrollment is decreasing. So that ratio, our property value per member, is going up. Other things to consider. The timeline for referendum questions. Now, adding to this, you also want to consider other budget priority commitments. So if we're talking about doing increases or paying for this out of operations without a referendum, and we're committing to prep time as a priority, that's going to take precedence. So we're going to go into next year's budget planning, staffing, based on the new prep time rules, and then go from there. That's going to add to the deficit situation without additional support from the state. The three hundred twenty-five is fixed in the two-year state budget. And then the point that Ms. Stevens was making with the special ed aid, we see a jump in this first year of the biennium, not in the second year. It's very minimal, it's three percent. So that's going to be an extra challenge. So the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget is going to be a challenge, but we will work through that. Board should contemplate, should the scopes of the projects be revised, or do you like them as they were? And that's the plan to move forward? Do we have to do them all at once? And this is another debate question, but then, how do you pick which one goes first? And then, always be mindful of using reserves so that it's planned, controlled, one-time cost, and you minimize the impact to your cash flow operations, and you minimize the impact to of your interest revenue, because if you push too hard and you reduce your revenue, that's another cut to your budget. So lost revenue is something you want to avoid. It'll end up being another cut somewhere else out of expense. Has to be one side or the other. And that's really it, just quick.
Okay, so this is an information item, not an action item, but we want to, and currently, what are we doing with our buildings that don't have controlled entrances, just for the public?
So we do have kind of a little stopgap measure in there. We have what are called monitors, the door monitors and kind of like escorts, making sure that people are not going from the main entrance into the hallways, that they're directing them to the main offices first, and they're getting vetted through the raptor system and all that other good stuff.
And this item will be on the agenda again in September with more information?
Correct. I believe at Agenda Review, we talked about utilizing the Safety Committee, possibly to contemplate some of the decisions to give the board input. Ultimately, the board will have to make some kind of a decision on where you want to go with this. In order to do the borrowing under the revenue limit, there are rules and there are statutes that we would have to follow to go with that, too. And there are contesting periods where the public can oppose the borrowing. So there's like a thirty-day period that the public, we would have to put notice, and people could object to it. So there's a process. But the first thing that needs to happen is we need to decide what project we're doing. Are we doing a ten million dollar project? Are we doing a twelve and a half million dollar project? So that's where I think the Safety Committee comes in, contemplating what these are going to look like. Are we going to just pick up and leave off where we were with the twelve and a half million dollar project? Or are you going to revise it? And then, once that's settled, then there's a process for the board to do what's called an initial resolution, and then you go from there.
Okay, my apologies. Mr. Tierney, your question?
It's not really, it's more of a statement. I want to say thank you to Sabrina. She brought this to you to get this going. And thank you to, you sat down and talked to her about it, you talked to me about it. Like I said, at the Agenda Review, you know, picking one or the other, I think you just do them all at once. Re- revise it, make it as cheap as, you know, get the best bang for our buck, and then whatever you think we can afford would be my opinion, but...
Yes, and thank you both for being on the Safety Committee. More questions? Okay, we'll be hearing more from Mr. Hamden.
If I could just, just a real quick thing I wanted to add, that when we look at controlled entrances, they need to be looked in the overall safety plans of the district, and that this is, this is a piece of that plan. And I know Mr. Hathcock presented that back in July, a lot of the recommendations of the Safety Committee. But when we think about it, there's really not one strategy that's a cure-all for safety. It's just how do we layer it, and how do we make things as safe as we can get them? So I just, I feel the need to provide that bit of context to our discussion moving forward.
Okay, thank you. We're up to the G Annual Restraint and Seclusion Report. Thank you, Mr. Hamden.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the annual required report presentation. Presentation information-only item related to the prior year's data in our schools for restraint and seclusion incidences as defined by the state requirements. As you can see, overall, they've gone down, and they're still addressed on a case-by-case basis. There's both incidences and number of students, and in many cases, it's repeated by the same students, and more often than not, by students with special needs aligned to their accommodations related to their IEP, developed by their IEP team. So I'm joined by Stacy Guckenberg, our Director of Special Ed and People's Services, and we're going to be happy to answer any questions. The only big change this last year is we implemented three sites that had specific seclusion rooms, Bose, Frank, and Forest Park. So that's why you're going to see larger numbers for those specific locations because of the investment that was made to have a specified and established room, meeting the state parameters for seclusion, where students can't harm themselves, they're still always monitored, and they're only in there for the duration and time necessary to de-escalate the situation.
Okay, this is a yearly report, and it's given to the board for information purposes. Do we have any questions for these two? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to H, Revision of Policy seventeen-ten: Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities, Title IX, First and Second Read.
So this has to do with Policy seventeen-ten. Last year, we eliminated some administrative positions. We had juggling of responsibilities. And long story short, all this change does today is it adds Tony Casper as another Title IX Coordinator. Tony is the E-School Principal. As you know, he does a lot of work with our Administrative Review Committee in looking at district-level behaviors, and so he was already our Title IX Decision Maker. Beth Orbansepp is going to take over that role as Tony starts to handle more and more of the coordinator responsibilities, making sure that we're in compliance with the two thousand twenty sexual assault guidelines that are within the Title IX law.
Questions for Mr. Hathcock? This is an action item. Dr. Price?
First and second reading. It's a first and second reading. Motion to approve, recommendation the board approve the revisions to Policy and Rule seventeen-ten: Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities, as a first and second reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion, questions, anything? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hathcock. Next, we have Resolution in Recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Mrs. Adams.
Well, if somebody would like to read in English, I'll be happy to read in Spanish. To do both is going to be kind of tedious.
I was hoping I could do Spanish and you could do... Not a chance.
No, we're not letting you.
Okay, English first?
You can go English first.
Okay. Whereas in nineteen sixty-eight, President Lyndon B. Johnson first proclaimed National Hispanic Heritage Week to pay tribute to the contributions of Latinos and Latinas in American culture and the work of early Spanish explorers and settlers. And whereas this timeframe included the anniversaries of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua on September fifteen, as well as Mexico's independence on September sixteen. And whereas the recognized contributions grew, and as such, Hispanic Heritage Week was expanded to National Hispanic Heritage Month, which has been celebrated from September fifteen through October fifteen since nineteen eighty-nine. And whereas we recognize and honor the contributions of Hispanic and Latino leaders, educators, and community members in Kenosha and Wisconsin, whose impact continues to shape our schools and communities. And whereas KUSD is committed to fostering an inclusive, equitable, and respectful learning environment for all students, and acknowledges the importance of honoring the histories and contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities year-round. And whereas by observing National Hispanic Heritage Month, we raise awareness of and celebrate the culture and traditions of people whose ancestry can be traced to Spain, Mexico, Central America, and the Caribbean Islands. And whereas integrating Hispanic history throughout the school year and across all subject areas enriches students' understanding of US history, contributes to a more accurate and inclusive education. Now, therefore be it resolved that Kenosha Unified School District's Board of Education does hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages all schools to engage in meaningful educational activities that reflect the spirit and purpose of this observance.
Mrs. Adams.
En español. Considerando que en mil novecientos setenta y ocho, el presidente Lyndon B. Johnson proclamó por primera vez la semana nacional de la herencia hispana para rendir homenaje a las contribuciones de los latinos y latinas a la cultura esto uridense y el trabajo de los primeros exploradores y colonos españoles. Y considerando que este plazo incluyó los aniversarios de la independencia de los países latinoamericanos de Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. El quince de septiembre, así como la independencia de México. El dieciséis de septiembre. Y considerando que las contribuciones reconocidas crecieron y como tal, la semana de la herencia hispana se expandió al mes nacional de la herencia hispana que se celebra del quince de septiembre al quince de octubre desde mil novecientos ochenta y nueve. Y considerando que reconomecemos y honaremos las contribuciones de hispanos y líderes latinos, educadores, y los miembros de la comunidad en Kenosha y Wisconsin, cuyo impacto continuo ha molionado nuestras escuelas y comunidades. Y considerando que el distrito escolar unificado de Kenosha, KUSD, está comprometido y formenar un eterno de aprendizaje inclusivo, equitivo y después tuyo para todos los estudiantes. Y reconoce la importancia de honar las historias y contribuciones de las comunidades hispanas y latinas durante todo el año. Y considerando que el observar el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, damos a conocer y celebramos la cultura y las tradiciones de personas cuya ascendencia se remonta a España, México, América Central, y las islas del Caribe. Y considerando que integrar la historia hispana durante el año escolar y en todas las áreas temáticas enriquece la comprensión de los estudiantes sobre la historia de los Estados Unidos y contribuyó una educación más precisa y inclusiva. Ahora, por to- por lo tanto, se resuelve. Que la junta de educación del distrito escolar unificado de Kenosha. Proclama del quince de septiembre al quince de octubre. Como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana. Invita a todas las escuelas y participar en actividades. Educativas significativas que reflejen el espíritu y propósito. De esta comem- commemoración.
Thank you, would you like to make a motion to accept the resolution?
Yes, I would, I'd like to make a motion, motion to accept the um National Hispanic Heritage. Uh Month twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, none, Chair votes aye. Brings us to the National Suicide Prevention Month twenty twenty-five, Mrs. Stevens.
Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Month, which is intended to help raise awareness. That prevention is possible, treatment is effective and people do recover. And whereas in these challenging times, message messages of hope and healing are more needed than ever. And whereas Kenosha Unified Students, Staff and Families. Should be able to access high-quality prevention, support, rehabilitation and treatment services. That lead to recovery and a healthy lifestyle. And whereas the Kenosha Unified Board of Education publicly places. Our full support behind educators, coaches, advisors, parents, guardians. Mental health professionals, healthcare professionals, police officers and others as partners. In supporting our community. And whereas we recognize the importance of empowering students to support one another. And fostering safe spaces that encourage open conversations about mental health. And whereas reducing the stigma associated with mental illness and suicide is critical. To ensuring that those in need feel safe seeking help. And whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health challenges. Suicide attempts and loss and substance abuse are significant and valuable to individuals, families. And our community at large. And whereas we must encourage relatives, friends, coworkers and providers. To take the time to check on family, friends and neighbors, recognize the signs of a problem. And guide those in need to appropriate services and supports. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kenosha Unified School District Board of Education. Does hereby proclaim September as National Suicide Prevention Month. And encourages schools, families and community partners to engage in ongoing prevention. Education and outreach efforts throughout the year. I'd like to make a motion to accept uh this uh Prevention Month for National Suicide Prevention Month.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, Chair votes aye, motion passes, donations to the district.
Uh the district has received the following donation, Play to Learn CDC LLC donated one thousand dollars to the Bradford High School Boys Soccer Team. Like to make a motion?
Yes.
The Board of Education approve acceptance of the above-listed gift, grant. Or request per, as per Board Policy fourteen hundred to authorize the establishment of appropriate accounts to monitor fiscal activity. To amend the budget to reflect this action and to publish the budget change per Wisconsin Statute sixty-five point nine zero five A.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, Chair votes aye, motion passes, this brings us to the last part of the meeting. The announcement and updates by the board members, two-member limit per person, Mrs. Stevens.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the staff and teachers, principals. Our our whole community and and just the fact that we are working very hard. In difficult situations with not enough funding, but yet we're accomplishing things that we haven't been able to in years past. Um it shows that we are functioning well and our superintendent works well with us. To reach the goals that we want to reach and I wanna thank you for that. It's not an easy job for any of us because of the situation with funding. But it, the work is moving forward and we just did a lot of that tonight, so thank you to our community for all the support.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens, Mrs. Adams. Mister Brian.
Just wanted to say, looking forward to the start of the school year. Welcome to all the new students, new teachers, welcome back to all the existing students and existing teachers. Looking forward to getting out in the schools and joining some of my colleagues out there, um cause it's. One of my favorite parts of the job, I haven't been able to do that yet since joining the board, but you know, when I was on the board previously, that was one of my favorite things to do. Um and then also kinda echoing the sentiments, I wanna thank Bob and Sabrina for their persistence with getting prep time on the agenda. But also to Doctor Weisen, to uh Mary Fergreen to put uh prep time on the agenda and get it done, make it happen. We are in some difficult budget situations and you know, in spite of that, I think you know, with the community support, it's, you know, we've been able to. Uncover a lot of uh some interesting information, be able to make, you know, make some important decisions, tough decisions. But I think we're getting into a position where we can move forward and get a lot of the stuff that we said we were gonna get done uh completed, so. Um looking forward to getting, seeing some of these changes through and uh go going forward into a positive school year, moving KUSD forward.
Thank you, Mister Brian, Doctor Price.
Uh just said uh it was fun being in on the new teacher induction day, that was uh. Fun being there with the superintendent and the president and uh just seeing these folks getting ready to set up their classrooms, it's uh every single year, it's like this, but uh. Wish them well, right?
Yeah, Mister Tierney.
I'll end on a good note, cause we got one last week before school starts and I was at Open House today, so teachers enjoy, teachers and staff, take your last week. Cause man, I couldn't do it, but uh. Yeah, I don't know, good luck everybody and I hope everybody has a good year this year.
Thank you, Mister Tierney, Mrs. Landry.
I'm also excited for the start of the school year, I want to wish all of the teachers luck. Um you guys got this, um and I also wanna let the teachers and staff know and principals, if you ever have anything that's going on at the school, any special event. Please send me an invite, I'd like to participate in all of those that I can, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Landry, did you have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Ooh, okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.